All right, I would like to appreciate everybody who was patient enough to wait for us to finish that last meeting and to come in here. So I will call this regular monthly meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:07. I will start us off with a roll call of board members. I am Deb Schut, I am the chair. We have Thage Singh, our vice chair.
Present, Deb.
Jeff Fleishman, our secretary.
Present, thank you.
Jackie Blaia.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Laura Young.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Nicole Russo.
Present, thank you.
And Sarah Thompson is absent this evening. Our administrators, Dr. Carnemola, our superintendent, is here, there she is, okay. Mr. Janini, our assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Mr. Medick, our assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Russo, our business manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Sardinska, our executive assistant to the superintendent and board clerk.
Present, thank you.
If you would all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I always like to start our meetings by reading the mission statement to remind us of why we all sit at this table together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. This next portion of the meeting is very meaningful for me, and I didn't realize I was going to get choked up, and it's happening. I want to acknowledge that we have two of our longstanding board members, Laura Young and Jackie Blaia. We joined at the same time, eight years ago, on this board, and we worked very hard together, and it's bittersweet for me to see you go because I'm so proud of the work that you have helped push forward to get us to where we are today. So you will be sorely missed by me especially because I've done this with you the whole time, and it'll feel very strange not to have you as companions on the board. I want to acknowledge, Jackie, your heart has always been right on your sleeve, and I appreciate that about you. Your compassion for students and your wants for all students' needs to be met has always mattered to me, and I think you're just going to continue to do that in your next chapter, and I'm excited for the world to have you join in that capacity. So thank you for serving, and you're so dedicated that we will miss you. Laura, you have always come at it with the pit bull mentality, whatever the students need, you will fight until they get it, and I value that in you as well. And you've been a voice that's been strong on policy and in financial conversations, and you've been consistent, and I think that matters, that people know what they're going to get, and you're always going to fight for the right thing, and so I value that in you as well. And I want to acknowledge that you chaired policy for us, you also chaired the audit committee before it switched over into joining into finance. And Jackie, you chaired curriculum and professional practices for us, but you served many, many hours on negotiations as well. So you both have done such good work, and I believe that the district is in such a better place today than it was eight years ago, and I hope you're proud of that and you feel relief in leaving us in good hands because you helped participate in bringing on Dr. Carnemola as well, and so that's part of your legacy too. So I will allow other board members, if they would like to say something, and then of course we have to give you gifts, so. Go ahead, Jeff.
So let me start with Laura. So you may not remember this, but you were the first person that welcomed me to the Board of Education. In the time period post-election, before I was sworn in, I was attending meetings to see what's going on. You went out of your way to walk up to me in the back of the room, introduce yourself, and welcome me, and that sort of set the tone for our relationship, and I think it speaks highly of you. You've always been very open to opinions, open to discussion. We've had several discussions over the years, here and then on the phone, but you've always wanted to hear all sides. Whether you agreed or not, you were always open, and I always appreciated that because I think that's important to have that discourse in a democracy, and it also speaks to your overall integrity. You never went in knowing this is a sure thing, you always invited the discussion. In addition, I've always appreciated your institutional memory when it came to issues of policy. You understood what my concerns have been over the years with policy, I've appreciated you validated it, right? And you again heard what was happening, and your goal was the integrity of school board policy to ensure everything good for our students. So you are a great loss, I will miss you, and thank you for all that you've done. Jackie. I feel at times you and I have had a love-hate relationship. I consider you a friend, and I think we've developed a really nice friendship over the years, followed with moments of complete disagreement and being upset with each other, but at the end we've always come back. What I've appreciated in you again is that you've always respected my... I turned it on.
Okay, sorry, I got reminded to make sure it was going, sorry.
Now I lost my train of thought. You always sought out my opinion. I felt appreciated because you understood that in my professional life, I was an educator, and so sometimes my questions were coming from that standpoint, and you were very open to hear that feedback and try to understand. Usually it's how you started the conversation with me. You said this, "I don't understand, can you explain what it means from your perspective?" And again, that speaks to your own integrity about the work that you did here, you were very passionate that the work that you did here was meaningful. Particularly, I know you did a tremendous amount of work in terms of our social-emotional learning because at the end of the day, your concern was the overall well-being of our students, and I think that's an important message, and I greatly appreciate you being the flag bearer for that. You too will be sorely missed.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, I love these two women so much, I do. I mean, I just got to know you when I ran for the office, and you've helped me, both of you. I'm lumping you together, okay? I'm not going to individualize this, but the leader of the Boy Scouts, there's this quote that I found that's so powerful, the founder of the Boy Scouts, he told his scouts, "To try to leave this world a little better than you found it." And I feel as though that speaks to what you have done these past eight years. You're leaving, and it's been said already tonight, but you're leaving the Avon Public Schools so much better than how you found it, in so many ways, I'm not going to list them. You do, it's interesting, institutional history, you have the history of this place, and I know how confident you feel because you've told us that you're walking away knowing that we're in good hands, but I am really, on a personal level, I feel like we have a love-love relationship, not a love-hate relationship, and I'm going to miss you both personally so much. I feel like you're always open to questions, I'm like the person with all the questions and conversations, and I look forward to hearing what you do next. I know you're going to continue to make the world a better, a better place than how you found it. That's what you've done here in Avon, so thank you, and we'll be in touch for sure.
Thank you, that's so nice, yeah.
Jackie and Laura, you guys have been an immense help to me personally, coming onto the board. Your advice, the phone calls, the professionalism that you carry when you speak about things, the integrity, the commitment to the district, to the kids in particular, is just really touching to have seen, that you never wavered from that, no matter what went on. Those COVID years were hard, and you still kept sight of the goal of making the district better for the kids. I'm going to really miss you, but you're welcome to come back for every single meeting and smile at us from the audience. Sign up for public comment.
I have things to say.
But I will forever be appreciative of the mentoring that you both have shared to make me a better board member and to give back to my community because of the things that you have shown me. We're going to miss you.
So I am the newbie, so unfortunately I did not get that much time to work with both of you, but when I was appointed earlier this year, you both contacted me to welcome me, and that meant a lot to me, especially as a brand newcomer coming by myself. Laura, you've been an amazing chair for the Policy Committee, answering my questions, explaining the history of the policies and whatnot. Jackie, you clearly have a huge heart, and that's something that I respect and admire in both of you. You've always shown that you have the best interests of Avon students, and I do want to thank you for sharing your knowledge and your expertise and making me feel welcome for the last few months. So good luck in everything.
So you may not remember this exactly, because why would you necessarily with all the other things that we've done, but Deb was the one to always remember, you know, she'll send me happy contract anniversary. And it was December 12th, 2018, that we were in the community room, and I came in to be announced as the superintendent and to officially be appointed and sign my contract, although I didn't start until March. And of course, the two of you were there, had been there throughout the interview process, many others who aren't sitting here with us anymore, and I believe, if I remember correctly, the outgoing board members were there also, who I would actually never work with. But last week, on the 12th, and interestingly enough, side note, Christine Sardinska started with us on December 12th last year. So it's, I find it very odd now that somehow this happened, and the two of us have the, you know, now everybody's going to know it's always the 12th. As a weird thing, you know, I'm one for this sort of stuff, on the 12th usually. I have worn the same outfit. I bet you there's somebody that's not, somebody's noticed this out there. Every single year, it's this one. I didn't do it this year because I said, "I'm going to save it this year, and I'm going to wear it on the night that these two leave," because it's two more of the original board members that are leaving. You know, I've had the good fortune of working with a lot of board members over the years, but there had been a standard, you know, the board that originally hired me had been here for a while, and now we're at the point where it's actually only Jeff, Deb, and was the two of you. So for the first time since I've been here, I think we're coming to the point where there's less of the folks that I originally started with. So as a small aside, I said, "I'm going to, for old times' sake, I'm going to wear the outfit I showed up and signed my contract in, as if it matters to anybody but me." But I bring it up just so that you know that it was, it was an honor for me to take the position, to come that night, and I was about to say every day since, most days since. It's continued to be an honor and a privilege to work with you, to be the superintendent in Avon. You certainly had the disadvantage in some ways of being a part of a board of education anywhere, as Lynn mentioned and some others, during, you know, the years of which we shall not speak about, of the pandemic. Those were hard, those were hard times, on top of many other issues that we've managed over the years, and I'm grateful, I would say it was to my and our advantage that we had you and the board members that we did that went through that time with us, because I think we made it through in a way that many other boards did not in most places. And certainly the two of you, being on curriculum and professional practices while we had to alter how we taught and revised... Have we revised almost every policy we have at this point? We're getting close to it. I think that the legacy of the work that the two of you have done before my time on the board and since my time with you as the superintendent is tremendous, and I'm grateful to you for being a part of bringing me here and for continuing to support me, the administrators, the faculty, staff, and all the students and families in Avon. Thank you very much for your service.
Did you ladies want to say anything? You don't have to.
I did want to say, Laura. I didn't have anything planned because I was just going to quickly run it out, but then, you know, Deb got me going, and I think what I would say is how grateful I am to have worked with all of you so much, and I think Deb and I have had probably 30,000 phone calls since the first day we met, and Laura too, that there was always something popping up, and I guess I feel, and I think I have felt for the last couple of years, even before COVID, that boards of education are all of a sudden really being scrutinized across the country, and I think we felt, I felt pressure like I had never felt before in this building and outside of this building, and I really just feel grateful that everybody has worked so hard to allow for really good business to go on despite those other factors, and I am very grateful, even with this budget and all the other budgets, which I think is our main job, to see that we are prioritizing what our students need, and, you know, that's really important. That's not how I think I, when I first came on eight years ago, I think it was always hard to really decipher what everybody needed, and I feel really thrilled to leave it in your hands, and I think you're so capable, and you're so student-focused and staff-focused, and I'm just really grateful. So thank you all for everything and making it so fun most of the time.
I'll turn this on because my husband says I mumble, but I hadn't prepared anything either. However, I will say this, no one takes the role of being a public servant lightly. Becoming an elected official is really hard work, and no one of us, no single one of us could do this work without the rest of us as a team. And for myself, the main driver for me was because I am inspired by all the students who are here, and I'm so grateful for those who take on the role of becoming a board rep, as a student board rep. This has to be excruciatingly boring at times, and truthfully, you know, a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting for your extra work, basically, to go ahead and find out what all the reports are from all the schools and report that back to us, it's a big responsibility, so thank you for taking that on. And to our incredible educators who come to school every day and do the best work for our district, we are so, so lucky. And to have staff and teachers and administrators and the people who come to the building every day to do their work, it takes a team. And to our extraordinary superintendent, and to all of you, really, thank you for making me a better person and a better board member. And to my husband and kids.
Yes, there you go. Don't forget. It is our tradition to give a symbolic gift of a school bell that's been engraved with their names and their years of service, so I will come and deliver these to you ladies.
Should we get a picture of the entire board together as we go?
Yeah.
Do a picture. Big picture. We're doing a picture.
This time we're coming here out of the sample, and you're not getting up, and it's for you. Okay? Okay, first time. Who's the...
They go screen for change, you have to relax, right? Senator.
Depends on his profile.
Oops, sorry.
You okay?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, ladies. All right, now we move on through the business. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education regular monthly meeting minutes of November 14th, 2023?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. Do I have a second? Second by Jackie, all in favor? Aye passes unanimously with eight. Okay. Anyone that would like to speak to us from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to items of information proposals, our student reps. We have Lillian and Nick tonight, I don't know who wants to go first this evening.
For AHS, the Interact Club had their first service project of the year, and that was Operation Cares for deployed service members who are unable to make it back for the holidays. And the school play went successfully, and the band and orchestra performances also went successfully, and choirs tomorrow. And there is an MSS concert on the half-day Friday, so we're going to broadcast that to all the other schools as well. More than 750 of our students are on the honor roll this year for the first quarter, and all the grades that took the PSAT scored higher than the state average. The Sierra Club and Fashion Club are holding a youth clothing drive, intramural basketball is back. We raised over $1,000 on Pajama Day to raise awareness for childhood cancer. Chairwoman Schut actually spoke to NHS about the role of leadership and how we can be better leaders on our own, and the AHS camarada singers went around to holiday carol at the other schools. For Avon Middle School, they are now number six in the state of Connecticut, according to U.S. News. There was a PTO Turkey Bowl on November 19th, which feels like a year ago, and the toy drive on December 4th to December 12th was for children in Hartford. And finally, Thompson Brook School had the March of Dimes Town Meeting, and they had performance at the town hall, have a new weekly Rocco's Recognition Award, and they had their parent-teacher conferences.
So for the month of December, for PGS, PGS had their annual winter concert that went extremely well. It was announced that we sold $22,000 worth of books from our book sale, so a huge thank you to anyone who donated or contributed. In December, students and staff joined together to raise money for CCMC to help support their efforts to fight pediatric cancer. To show support, they wore PJs to school and donated $1. Thanks to, thanks to all who donated to the Turkey Truck Collection for the month of November, all the donations weighed in at 975 pounds, which is a retail value of 1,900. This donation helped to feed a lot of people, and not much was posted for the month of December for RBS, but they also had their winter concert and participated in raising money for children at CCMC by wearing their PJs to school.
Thank you both. Next is our financial report with Ms. Russo.
Good evening. Our financial report for November, we ended the month with an encumbered balance of 7.52%, a little over $5 million. Some of the variances we had this month included salaries on our administrative side. We have Mr. Rankwitz leaving us at the end of the year, and we have the APS Assistant Principal unencumbered at this point until we find a replacement there. In certified salaries, we have a retirement coming up, and we have a new teacher to be encumbered in December for that position. Some other positive balances are due to unfilled stipend positions. In non-certified salaries, we have some coverage with our custodians and maintainers for leaves and some interim postings. Teaching assistants, we continue to onboard them through the month of November, and paraeducators, as we spoke about in our last meeting, we've had some additional FTEs come onboard as we have met student needs as they've moved into the district. Budget transfer 2024-028 uses some savings we have in our salary lines to offset those variances. Now their expenses, we've seen increased usage in our copiers, which a little bit over the budget number that we had put forward this year. Also see increase in paper usage due to that. Telecommunications, you'll see on budget transfer 2024-029, just a reclassification between our central office line and our district-wide line. Utilities, we did have a variance in water usage, some of you may have heard about the flood at the middle school and some of those cleanup, so we were flooded, and then a little bit more water to clean up that flood. So we had a little bit increased usage there, but, yeah, a little ironic, but budget transfer 2024-9 cleans up all those variances in our other expenses. Yeah, that was unintended. In special education, we had some rising, rising costs this year, as we talked about at our last meeting when we went over financials, we had not yet encumbered all of our contracts for our out-of-district tuitions, as well as our encumbrances for our transportation lines. We did have a number of students both move in and just have circumstances that require an increased need for wheelchair transportation. So that, those costs, as well as just increased student needs, pricing and route changes, some of the shared rides we were able to do in the past, we were unable to utilize either the, with another district because they didn't know where to go there, our students changed schools, they live in a different part of town, number of different circumstances come into place, but budget transfer 2024-029 is offsetting those increased transportation costs with a decreased liability we had in our tuition line for this year. So that's taken care of that for now. But as we talked about in finance, we do have a pause in spending, or what we call budget freeze, right now to make sure we can continue to meet our obligations for the rest of the school year, especially through winter, given what we know can happen with snow and floods and rain and all sorts of fun stuff there with overtime. So we'll see how we manage, and we'll reevaluate that when we get to the spring.
Any questions for Susan? All right, thank you. Moving on to committee and liaison reports, curriculum and professional practices, Jackie.
We have not met since our last meeting, I have nothing to report on.
Thank you. Finance, Lynn?
Yes, we met last week on the, sorry, December 12th, was it? Yeah, okay, so you weren't wearing that outfit, okay. It was December 12th, and basically we reviewed the financial highlights that Susan just shared with you, and I don't know when our next meeting is, I know we have a lot of budget meetings coming up next month.
So we didn't put any of the meetings coming up because it's one of the conversations for tonight?
Oh.
Because we have to approve...
No, we can do it at the next meeting.
At the, oh, that's right.
When we have the new board members. We have to look at our calendars.
Usually we do it at this meeting, we're waiting because we want to make sure that all the new folks, the dates can...
Gotcha.
Work.
But we do have June 10th for sure is our next budget conversation.
Anyway.
That's what I meant, oh my gosh, June. It was a J, it was a J sound, okay, excellent, thank you. Wouldn't that be nice? No, June, never mind, all right. Negotiations, there is nothing for me to share with you about that at this time. Policy, Laura?
We had Attorney Gleason with us for our last meeting, where we discussed a number of policies that are on the agenda tonight under New Business, ranging from nondiscrimination for both students and personnel to reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children, or reports of sexual assault of students by school employees, as well as a policy to improve the completion of the FAFSA form and construction of an agenda.
All right, thank you. Capital Region Education Council, Jackie.
I have nothing to report, anything that's come up I have forwarded to the superintendent. I do want to offer whoever is the next person, I'd be happy to arrange like a meeting or an introduction, or however I can help there.
That would be great.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. I want to work on it. All right, next is the chair's report. I want to thank Lily for mentioning, I was invited to the National Honor Society to speak on the, one of their pillars, leadership, and I was really touched to have been asked by their president, Anna Baron. I was preparing for weeks, my daughter happens to be a member of it, and I did not want to embarrass her, so I was trying to be very mindful of how to speak in front of all these students who arrived before 7:10 in the morning and were eager to hear what I was going to share with them. They really stayed focused, I felt like they were engaged, it was just quite an honor, and I was grateful to have been considered someone that could speak to that term, so I was really pleased to see many familiar faces in the crowd as well. I want to touch on the fact that Nicole and I had an opportunity to go to both Pine Grove and Roaring Brook to help Dr. Carnemola bring a new tradition to Avon. She asked, I'm sure you're going to speak to it as well, so I don't want to steal your thunder.
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay. But she asked the kindergartners at both Roaring Brook and Pine Grove to craft winter-themed cards, or at least artwork on a certain size paper, so she could create a card that would go out to all staff, board members, I received mine this week, and it was such a lovely idea. Every child participated, and then the hardest part was deciding who were the winners from each school. But Dr. Carnemola chose two real gems, and both students were darling, I mean, they were surprised, they had no idea we were showing up, we were hoping to acknowledge them tonight, that wasn't going to work out. So we went to the school when their entire class found out that their classmate had won, and it was just so heartwarming, and I'm thrilled that you want to bring this back every year. I just think it's wonderful to get the students involved, and they really are very talented, I've got to say, so that was really a lot of fun. Lastly, just knowing that this is our last meeting till this new year, I want to wish everybody a healthy and happy break, and I hope that when we come back in 2024, we have the beginning of something hopeful, and we're all in this together, so I hope that it goes smoothly for everyone. And that's it for me. So superintendent's report.
Thank you, and we'll start with Mr. Medick, the hiring report.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see for the hiring report for the month of December, we have continued to work to fill some of the vacancies that we had from the previous month, mostly in our non-certified areas. However, I'm very pleased to introduce two new educators to Avon. As the board knows, we did have two retirements at our last board meeting. Michelle Gladue will be retiring as of Friday, after more than 30 years of service to the district, and Ms. Sarah Parsons, a special education teacher here at the high school, retired right before Thanksgiving. So we're very pleased to introduce our two new hires in fourth grade. Mohamed El Safray is a brand-new educator to the profession, recently having completed his student teaching in Region 12, which is Washington, Roxbury, British. which is Washington, Roxbury, Bridgewater. He is a native of Egypt and grew up in the northwest corner of Connecticut. And due to the timing of his student teaching, we were able to start him on Monday. So he's been with the students, transitioning with Michelle, getting to know them, and setting up for their return on January 2nd. At the same time, we were able to, we have a very robust pool of candidates for the special ed position here at the high school. And we are pleased to welcome Tia Smith, who most recently has taught in Enfield Public Schools at the high school level, working with students in their transition to 1822 program. And Tia is an alum of AHS, and she'll be joining us on January 2nd. So we're very excited to welcome those two new educators. And that's the hiring report for December.
Thank you. Enrollment report, you see, we just continue to creep up a bit. We are up nine students this month from same time in 2022. It's just up two students from last month. We started this year at, we're pretty steady. As you can see, we started this year at 3,097 in August, and we are now at 3,103. So not a ton of additional students, but we are holding steady with enrollment.
Moving on, I wanted to, we had a conversation, obviously, at numerous previous meetings, and there was some questions that came to us as a result of the state moving forward with the reading waiver process. We had had some public comment to questions about, as you know, other times when it was not on the agenda. And thanks to Mr. Janini and Jody Krasinski for helping through this process. I had asked Jess to just put something together tonight that was kind of, again, an overview of where we've been, just so that we could put it back into perspective for everyone on the board and publicly what we have been doing related to the English Language Arts curriculum over the span of time since we began major revisions to date. So don't worry, that doesn't mean I have a 47-minute presentation that Jess is going to give. Just, we wanted to, again, be clear about, because we have discussed this over so many meetings, between curriculum and professional practices, meetings since 2017 until this year, and also at board meetings. I thought it might be helpful to kind of recap a big picture of where we've been, where we are right now, and what's next. So I'll turn that over to Jess.
All right, good evening, everyone. As you know, Avon has been awaiting the State Department of Education's decision on our reading waiver since late February of 2023, so it's been a while. Tonight, we want to provide you with an update regarding our status. And prior to, we also want to take this opportunity to recap, as Dr. Carnamola said, what's been a seven-year journey, give or take a few days, to, you know, update you on what's been happening with Avon's reading curriculum. I'll briefly recap some of the curriculum drivers for us here in Avon and highlight some of the key steps we took throughout the process to develop our English Language Arts curriculum. So what you see here is some of those drivers, and some of them should be very familiar to you, our mission statement, and then some of the focus areas from the Blueprint for Excellence. But I want to point your attention down to the last bullet, which is a review that was done by the Center for School Change back in 2018 and 19. And that review provided great insight into our practices, along with some feedback that included the need for more cohesive teaching practices here in the district.
I'll just interrupt for a second there, Jess, because I meant to say this also. Board members who were here, as we just talked about when I first started, will remember this, and the rest of you may not know this. But one of the goals as we moved the district forward, one of the things I was asked to do when I was hired, was to work with an outside agency, if you will, to look at the school district from the outside in and to help develop a new strategic plan. Our Blueprint for Excellence was originally developed as a result of the Center for School Change coming and doing this review, talking to staff, visiting schools, looking at data, meeting with us. You might remember those of you who were board members at the time, they met with individual board members also, parents, students. And so this was one piece of what became the strategic plan. But it was a large piece of it because, as Jess just said, we were looking to have a consistent and coherent way of teaching, reading, and writing throughout the district. And some of those initial recommendations are what started to carry this work forward. And that was 2018, when that began, the review.
All right, you can keep moving there, Christine. That's okay. So in an effort to boost those cohesive teaching practices and ensure we had a North Star for each decision we made, our process began with the development of a vision statement, which you see here. And of course, I won't read you each bullet point, but I do want to point out some of those highlighted pieces. You see the words joy, student choice, diverse perspectives, and the use of authentic texts, which really stick out. And that was important to make sure that whatever direction we headed in, that those key components were in place. It's those same beliefs that later confirmed for us the decision to defend our curriculum and the work that we had done when we did submit the waiver. So these next few slides highlight the work that's taken place over the past seven years. And again, don't worry, I won't read you every bullet point, just some of the key pieces. This work began seven years ago, as I mentioned, in 2017-18. An extensive review and revision process took place, and a K-12 vertical team was formed. It's important to note that this team had broad perspective from teachers, specialists, and administrators from across the district, and really all with the goal of making sure there was strong K-12 vertical alignment. So after a deep dive into several programs, conducting research and connecting with experts in the field of reading, the workshop model was selected as that cohesive instructional model, K-12. The Teachers College Reading and Writing Projects, those units were selected to be the resource. But then again, just, and we spoke about this in the past, we did write our own reading and writing units, K-5, here in the district. So the workshop is the delivery model, and the unit served as the backdrop. But we have our own curriculum units that have been written by our staff here in Avon. At this time, it's important to note that Avon was very intentional about two pieces. Even though we had made that decision, we were intentional in the decision to not use the Teachers College trainers to lead this work. We wanted the flexibility to train our own staff in our own locally-written curriculum. Second, we knew that the Teachers College units were not enough, and we would need to supplement with other resources to teach early literacy skills like phonemic awareness and phonics. This took place even before the Science of Reading legislation. And you'll note that came out in July of '21, so you'll see that work. We were aware of that and the need for that in our curriculum here in district even prior. As the right-to-read law began to take effect, and we embraced it, we have consistently checked ourselves and used what we've experienced through the Science of Reading Masterclass, along with our own professional readings to self-assess. As you might imagine, we've paused several times throughout this process to celebrate some of the good work and pieces that we had in place. And at times, it's also caused us to take pause and know that we had to refine some of the pieces that we had in place, some of our practices, and add to some of those programmatic resources that we have here in the district. So even though Connecticut passed the right-to-read legislation in July of 2021, we did not receive specific guidance until the 2022-23 school year. We knew the law guaranteed an opportunity for districts to submit their curriculum for approval. And of course, after the extensive work that's taken place here, it was an easy decision for us to know that we were going to submit that waiver. We learned of the exact waiver process in late 2022 and submitted our documentation a couple months later in late February of 2023. We continued with the Science of Reading Masterclass, extended our phonics program to Grade 3, and added additional fluency phonics and vocabulary resources, K-6. From February until October, we waited to hear back from the state. And then in October, we did have an opportunity to meet with some representatives from the State Department to give some updates on some of the work that had taken place since our waiver submission in February and to answer some clarifying questions that they had posed to us. Finally, on December 1st, we received notification that Avon had received a partial waiver approval, which means, partial approval means that we can continue to use some of the same resources that we currently utilize here in district. However, to be in full compliance with Connecticut general statute, some additional resources will need to be integrated. Specifically here in Avon, that means we'll need to add resources in the area of comprehension and vocabulary. So what's next? Sure.
I thought I saw in one of the letters from the state that fluency also, do we have to?
So we do have geodes in place, which according to them is a program that you can use to support fluency in the district. We don't have it yet in Grade 2, so we're in the process. We've purchased the materials and started to implement it in K-1. And so we feel that that should be an easy, you know, move up for us, just like we did with foundations, to add it to Grade 2. And of course, fluency is really integrated throughout with all of this, you know, comprehension, phonics, phonemic awareness. It's, you know, ties all of them together as well. This would be, yes, according to the guidance they've given us, adding the additional piece in for comprehension, fluency and vocabulary would meet the letter of the law, if you will. Oh, can you go back one, Christine? So last week, we got some information about some conversations that have been happening across the state, multiple districts, including Avon. You know, we're part of a group that learned that there was some new guidance coming out. I don't know if you want to?
Those are, I'll take it. So we, as you know, we received the letter that our waiver was partially approved. That was only four of us as school districts that applied for one that happened with. So we started moving forward, and Jess will talk more about that. But to try to determine whether or not we are going to choose a new program just for vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. On the other hand, kind of at the 11th hour, the Connecticut Association of Primary School Superintendents, CAPS, you know, our equivalent of CAE, convened a meeting last Thursday. And I wasn't able to be at the meeting. We've actually been working on one of the other newer changes to the statute and our requirements, and we've been going through new training related to teacher evaluation. So that afternoon, Jess, Roberto, and I, and many of the other administrators, were in that training session while this CAPS meeting took place. So it's 4 o'clock, I have to get this from the timing angle because it's just kind of the way this whole thing had gone. It's 4 o'clock in the afternoon on Thursday, and this meeting is held. And they had invited Tom Mooney from Shipman &amp; Goodwin to come and talk through this reading waiver process and what next. Because there are numerous districts that were denied altogether, denied entirely, told they couldn't use anything that they had and so forth. So there are a number of districts in the state that are in a worse place than we are in terms of whether or not they have to completely overhaul curriculums, spend a lot of money in a short amount of time to buy reading programs and so forth. And so Shipman &amp; Goodwin's advice to the school districts that they represent in the state of Connecticut, which are the majority of the school districts. On the flip side, it should be noted that they also work with the Connecticut State Department of Education. So this is a, it's a dual-edged sword with them. And I should mention that if they are going to fight as the board attorney on behalf of boards of education throughout the state against this process, there may come a time when they are no longer able to represent the boards, and being able to do that because it would be considered a legal conflict because they work with the Connecticut State Department of Education also. So putting that out there, that aside, it is in a conflict, they determined, for them to advise superintendents and school districts and also boards of education related to this reading waiver. And what they advised everyone they represented to do, which I found out on Friday after not being at the meeting on Thursday, thanks to Jess, who had also heard it from another assistant superintendent, was to submit a rebuttal to the denial of the reading waiver. Whether or not you planned on actually going against what they said or not, just to legally have it on the record that the board's attorney, basically, has said they don't believe that the Connecticut State Department of Education and/or the commissioner's office, and I'm not going to get into all the legalese of it because, to be perfectly honest, I didn't get completely updated on it myself as a result of not being able to ask the questions. I got all of the documents, so I have an idea, but it's not really, I know, generally speaking, it's not worth taking the time tonight. They advised all of their school districts to send, they wrote the letters for everyone, depending on which version you got, completely denied, partial, or transitional, which was what I think the majority of people had, which was multiple components had to be replaced. We only had one, and the rest was approved. So it's a form letter that Shipman drafted for their districts. They advised that every superintendent that they represent send this letter to the commissioner's office, so I did that on Friday. And basically, it says that disagree with the process that was followed and that we potentially would want to have another conversation about the legality of it and whether or not we are truly required to move forward in the way that they have put out there. That said, we're not doing anything different here as a result of submitting that letter. We already, we got our response. We were told that the State Department of Ed has decided, you know, in conjunction with some other research, that Readers Workshop and Teachers College Methodology does not meet the standards for the Science of Reading, that at this point is what they have decided, and they have told us that therefore we cannot use it for reading comprehension, fluency, and vocabulary. As you know, we disagreed with that from the get-go, or we wouldn't have submitted the waiver because of all the work that we have already done here. That said, in good faith, because we're going to do whatever is the right thing to do by the students and staff teaching the students, if it would be a better thing for us to choose a different program, that may be what we do. We're in that process now, as Jess just is telling you, what's next? We have the committee pulled back together. Let's look at the other resources, and let's possibly pilot some materials and see where we land. But in the meantime, what we were told the superintendents was, they had put a date that you had to respond to that denial, no matter what type of denial was, whether it was a full denial, a partial denial, a transitional denial. If you did not send something to the state by last Friday, the end, close of business last Friday, whatever happened, you followed what you had already been given. You had no recourse after that because of the way the paperwork had been given to us. So they told us all this blanket advice. Put it in that you disagree with the process that was followed and that you would like to have another conversation about whether or not your materials, curriculum, and so on meets the standards, and make another appointment to do that. That's the letter that I submitted on behalf of the board. Go ahead, Jeff.
Just want to make sure I understand.
It's keeping options open, basically.
Well, yes and no. We, as a district, and I think you presented the material, we surpassed the state average across the board when it comes to all this material. So, but they decide, no, we're not acceptable. And they provide us, if I remember the presentation correctly, a list of 11 vendors the state has chosen that we must spend money on to the tune of over $100,000, I think, was in the proposed budget, to meet this requirement. So it's not even us picking or deciding what works best. The state is dictating this. And my understanding is if we choose to fight this, we can't use our current attorney because they also represent the state. So we would have to go out and spend additional money on a new attorney
We may, yes.
to fight the state.
Yes, we may.
And no one sees a overall conflict of interest or problem, starting with the state on down? It's costing us a tremendous amount of money unless we just roll over and go whatever we want. And then we're still paying money because despite our test scores, they have chosen for us. So to be honest, if they've chosen for us, a committee is a waste of time, waste of time. The state apparently seems to know what's best. They're not going to give us any money to make this purchase, but they have said these are what's appropriate. I think that's a huge problem. I think that's a huge problem, and I'm actually very upset with our attorney for they, for knowing that they are representing a majority of the school boards in the state, and at the same time, the State Department of Education, that they themselves didn't see the potential for a conflict of interest? I have a real issue with Shipman at this point, because I don't trust the advice now Shipman has given us. And I question whether or not they were able to give us their full advice last Friday, considering the potential conflict of interest.
Well, I, I'm not going to disagree with much of what you said, you know, I feel about the amount of work and time that our faculty, staff and administrators have put into developing this curriculum and related professional learning, and the, and the resources, and the money that has been spent by, by the town already on all of this. That is what it is, and if it, if we didn't believe in it, we wouldn't have spent the, I don't even know how many hours submitting the thousands of pages we did to people who were involved in it, besides Jess nodding at me-
And what if we don't comply?
-in the audience.
What if we simply don't purchase the material, continue the stellar program that Avon has become known for, that people move into this community for, that we're very proud of the hard work our staff has done, proud of the curriculum that we presented? What happens if we simply don't spend the money? What if that money gets cut from the budget?
Let me, let me, let me respond to the section. So, section one is, I, I don't disagree with you that I, we certainly find it obtrusive, to say the least, that this is the first time we've seen something like this happen, a program being mandated, yes. And that's why we went through this waiver process and did a great job of doing it, thanks to folks that work here that put all of the materials together to be able to submit to get the waiver. That said, on to the, on to the Shipman piece of it. Right now, Jeff, I, I wouldn't agree with that, just in, that I wouldn't trust what they're saying, just in the sense that no one, including Shipman, none of us had any idea how they were going to move the process forward. The, the process for waiver was developed by the Connecticut State Department of Ed, and it was sent out, and we did it, and then as Jess just relayed again in the timeline, it's December, and they put this out in February of 20, you know, we, we turned this in a long time ago, and just sat and waited. And no one knew the way they were going to truly assess them, what it might look like, what you would have to do to get approved, who, you know, we just, we just waited. And then we had our meetings, they met one-on-one with every district and went through everything that you submitted, so that if they had any follow-up questions, you could answer them. We all did that and communicated with each other, they asked us this, they asked us this, we all pretty much got asked the same questions, regardless of what was actually presented in the waiver, I might add, because the answers to all of the questions that we were asked were in the documents that we had submitted, but we clarified again. And so, move forward, and then, next thing you know, we have the decision, and we're told how it was made. And it's at this point that when CAPS asked, and CAE, so the boards of education being represented by CAE, and the superintendents being, and the school districts as a whole being represented by CAPS, asked Tom Mooney for an opinion on this process, that's really what the opinion is about. It's about the process that was followed. The legislation is what it is. It's whether or not the process that was put into place by the State Department of Education to meet with the legislation required is legal. And right now, that's what the advice is, is that, the advice is that it seems that the way the State Department of Ed and/or, and I'll say air quotes, the commissioner's office, I'm not saying the, the commissioner, but you know, as a whole, implemented a process that met the letter and the spirit of the law that was passed. And their advice right now is that it did not. And therefore, we should push back and say, you actually did not do what we thought you were doing according to the law, and we want you to look at that again. So, I will share that letter with you, because it details some of that.
Yep.
And I guess the and but is, let's say that there's a school district, I wouldn't, I don't know that I would expect this from necessarily here, Jeff, with us, to, you know, if we're really getting into the nitty-gritty of fighting it tooth and nail with the State Department of Ed, and so therefore had to get another attorney. I don't necessarily see that happening based on what's happened so far. What this means too is that the State Department of Ed has now gotten this exact same letter from numerous school districts in the state to say, we're not sure you did what you were supposed to do here, you better, you better revisit this. So, what are they going to do? They're going to talk to their legal counsel-
But I think-
-at the State Department, that's the important part.
Okay, because I think that's my frustration.
Shipman is not the, Shipman doesn't blanket represent the State Department of Ed. They have their own in-house legal counsel, and that is who has done piece, much of this with them, not Shipman. That, that's what I'm saying. There, the State Department of Ed has on staff legal counsel, and that, when we have been at these meetings, that's who we have.
So, what is Shipman's relationship with the state, then?
When it is, now, I don't want to speak too deeply into it, because I, I'm sure I don't know all the-
But I'm asking because they clearly raise the potential of conflict of interest.
Because anytime they do any work with an entity, if something, if, if you get into litigation, they cannot represent you. So, they have represented the state in whatever matters over time, they cannot, if, if, if a school district gets into litigation with the State Department of Education, Shipman is not going to represent both.
My concern is they didn't have the foresight of a potential conflict between the state, the local boards of Eds and the state, that they chose to take on the state as a client, causing a scenario where they may not be able to give us full advice because of conflict of interest. That's my main concern at this point.
I see what you're saying. They could probably speak better to that than I could.
I would like to know, our attorneys are truly giving us 100% of the best advice for us, and are not feeling filtered, because they're also trying to represent another client.
Understood, and I think we should get that advice from them, so that I don't misspeak about the idiosyncrasies of that.
Shifting just a little bit, and maybe Jess can answer this. I, I get the impression politically, Lucy Cawkins, people don't like her, you know, for whatever reason, states don't like her. Is it the workshop model, or is it the Lucy Cawkins units of study that the state said-
Yeah. Go ahead, Jess.
Yeah, so it's the units of study, and actually, interestingly enough-
There's nuance.
Lucy, love her or not, did release updated units-
I know.
-in 2021, and so, if you look at what's on Ed Reports, it's the last version dated, I don't remember the exact date, Jody probably could tell me, but that was the version they reviewed and used to make this decision. So, we have the updated units that we have here in district, but again, I want to go back to, we chose the workshop model as that cohesive method for delivering instruction, and we certainly pulled pieces from the TC units, but our curriculum, if you were to look at them, you would see a lot of differences between what's in the book and what our teachers actually teach in the classroom. So, I know that's a little-
No, no, so what did, what was their issue with?
With us?
Yeah.
That, that's one of the things we're still a little unsure about, is, and as, as Dr. Carnemola referenced, when we met with them, we specifically, through the waiver process, not in person, and then in person through those meetings, tried to show the alignment of exactly what was asked for in this, you know, Right to Read Act that we have here in district, and drew, you know, kind of through lines between the work that happens in our classrooms and our curriculum, and, and got kind of consistent feedback from other districts. So, that's where we're still a little unsure of exactly where we were missing the mark.
Basically, it seems, Lynn, if you look at the list, I think I can say this accurately, at least, draw whatever conclusions you want, if you look at the list of who was approved entirely, it was only districts that are not using anything to do with workshop.
Correct.
Right.
So, the only part of ours that was denied-
Wester does.
...was the piece that had anything to do with workshop, even though it's, we'd never, we've said this here before, we, we didn't adopt it as a program lock, stock and barrel. We utilized workshop model and ideology of some, and teaching methods, and inserted the other pieces to make sure we met the standards for the science of reading.
It worked pretty well, right, testing wise?
Well, we're still, I mean, you know, let's be fair too, though, Jeff, we're still working on what, what the testing of it looks like. This is still, we're new on the implementation side of this. So, we did see elementary test scores, standardized SBAQ scores, that we would like to see better than they are. So, I don't, I don't want to sit here and be facetious either and say that, you know, some, there's a direct correlation between everything that we've just done in Avon and how the kids performed on, on the Smart Balance Assessment. I, I can't say that. We are outperforming the state, and that said, we are on the earlier end of an implementation of what we're doing that meets all of these standards. So, we can't really, we can't really compare apples to apples of even a couple of years ago to, to this year, because it's taken the years of time to, you saw, from 2017 on, to fully implement this way of doing it and these materials.
Plus COVID.
Plus COVID. So, it's hard for us to draw a through line from, let's say, if we were one of those school districts that had been using the workshop model and so on for 10 years, and they had great scores, and by the way, many of them, if not most of them do, just as a side note, I'd be able to say that, but I can't, so I don't want to-
But the state can, right? We can't make the assumption of the impact, but the state can make that assumption. And then the state's going to turn around and say, you towns have to pay for it, you can only do what we feel is acceptable, you and your professionals don't actually have the authority or the knowledge to make that decision for you, except to choose from a preordained list of 11.
Well, all of that, I'll totally agree with, yes. That's, that's, that's a complete agreement, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, Laura.
No, so this was a very important update, I think, a couple of things. One, this is a long conversation for you all to, to sit through.
[laughing]
Again, going back to my, my original statement from earlier in the evening.
I just don't want the two-
It's not boring, though, right?
No.
Make this meeting as long as possible.
I, I agree that there seems to be a disconnect, I'll say that respectfully, between what the state's- Requirement, the legislati, legislative issues aside of programmatically what they're saying is correct, or ideal, or deemed okay in their minds. So, I am all in favor of the fact that we have submitted this rebuttal. There is nothing more that we as a board can do.
Nothing right now.
Our administrators have their hands tied a little bit, it sounds like, at this point, pertaining to curriculum, and you as the superintendent, to the degree that you have, have done what counsel has suggested should be done. Is there anything more that we can do as a board to support this process?
No, we just, not yet. We just, as I said, wanted to make sure that we left all of the options open, follow the advice, so that if it became an option that we wanted to consider not making any changes, we, we had it. And back to Jeff's question, so, you know, the so what? So, what if we just do nothing and don't do, you know, what the state says? Well, I'm not the board attorney, so I'm not going to answer from the legality standpoint of it.
They also represent the state, that I'm suggesting, but that's okay.
I guess what I, one thing I would say, though, is for us, and I've said this to you before, I'm, I'm pretty sure that one thing that we would be told is to remember that if, if something, if we have been given a requirement, and we choose not to follow it, even if it's because we think that we're doing better than that, it won't take, it could be one child out in the school district that doesn't learn to read at the level that we hope that they do, and-
But the expectation was established by the State Board of Education, not legislation, right? That's what we're challenging. We're not challenging the legislation, we're challenging the criteria established by a non-elected body.
Right, but this is one of those situations where, and you know, I always use this example because I had to say it so many times, and now we're really going to talk about the years, you know, that we don't like to talk about anymore, but remember, people would always say, I don't get it, how, how can the governor force us to wear masks? You know, it was a governor's executive order that we wear masks. It was actually never the governor's order that we wear masks. It was, it was the Health Department. The legislation allowed for the regu, it said in the law that the Department of Public Health would develop the regulations that had to be followed. And so, by virtue of the fact that the law said they told you what to do, it was like it being the law. Right now, the way that the legislation is written, so-
The administrator. I got it.
Yes, so we don't, as of now, unless, you know, notwithstanding what the back and forth we might still have with the State Department about whether or not they've really followed the law and the, and the process established they're in, or they've taken a little bit too much liberty with it, as of right now, without proving that, if we didn't follow what they told us, it'd be a stretch to say you're violating the law, but by default, you're violating the law, because the law said the State Department was going to establish this process and tell you what you could and could not use to teach. And so, right now, no, as, as much as we stand behind the work that we've already done here, I, I, we always have children that have difficulty learning to read, that's a, that's a fact of the matter, that's why we're here, right? We're a school district, we're here to teach all students, whether they walk in in kindergarten and they're already reading Harry Potter, or they walk in and they don't know their letters in kindergarten. And this is the and but, we don't want to ever set ourselves up for the reason for that being because we didn't do something that we were quote, supposed to do. And that's far too easy of a, of a parallel to draw, and we would be in, at a serious disadvantage from a liability standpoint. Again, not, not the board's attorney, but I'm certain that's what they would tell you if they were sitting here.
But of course, not every district has the resources or the wherewithal to just run out and go buy all new curriculum and train all their teachers-
Which is why-
-and how to use it.
Right.
And then states not exactly handing out grant monies to help purchase these curriculums or train teachers.
Well, to be fair, it's not a lot, but there is the, they put out the Right to Read Act grant funds, we did put in for it, we, we, as of right now, they increased the dollar amount, looks like they did for the whole entire state, I think in advance of this happening, knowing that pretty much no one was going to get this waiver. And so, we have $99,000 in grant funds that can be used toward this. And so, back to Jeff, you know, waste of time, a waste of money, one of the thing, we, we do have to use that, that grant fund, we have to use that grant funding. So, what we are thinking, and this is part of, now I'm skipping ahead to the what's next, right? Let's look at the materials, there are a couple of different pieces programmatically, Jeff, Jess, the answering Jeff, talking to Jess. Christine, can you put up the, the, the-
Next slide, yeah.
Thank you, the chart. So, these are the two that, programs that we would be looking at, adding in, in place of if we needed to. And so, I think what we'd be talking about within the next year, what we're hoping for, and again, we're still, this is still a little bit nebulous, because what they required us to do in the waiver was to fully implement the changes by July 1, 2025. I'm sorry, to-
Correct.
-partially implement. So, what we were thinking that was going to allow us, what we are thinking that's going to allow us, is to be able to pilot some of these and see if, which one, if either our reading consultants and our teachers like better, and therefore, we'll be able to use the grant money for that. And so, from that standpoint, no, we wouldn't be wasting the money, but right now, we're just moving the committee forward, and I'll turn it back to you.
Sure, so just-
Oh, Nicole did have a question, I'm sorry, maybe for me.
Just a really quick question, these programs, the 11 that they gave you choices of, are these 100% scripted programs, or would our teach-
Yes. So, the way they, yes, and if you, to be clear about how they're chosen-
When our teachers aren't qualified to do the lessons themselves, outside instruction, we have to hand them a script. Okay, I got you, no problem.
Ed Reports, which you heard Jess mention, we've talked about before, rates educational materials via criteria. These programs were rated by Ed Reports as, they were ranked highly to be able to be programmatic materials and curric, and curriculum in some cases, to effectively teach reading according to the science of reading standards. As Jess said, I don't know the date, she's probably looked it up back there by now, but the Teachers College, the Lucy, Lucy Cawkins version of the units of study that you asked about, that they reviewed at Ed Reports, was not the current version. We are now using the current versions. So, we don't know if that's going to change something at the State Department either. We, that's another, that's another unknown. Are they going to go back and say, never mind, this actually is okay, because they revised the units? We don't know. Go ahead, Jess.
Well, I, I think what you see up on the screen there speaks to how much of a moving target this has been. And if our, I'm thinking of our Thompson Brook students who were here a few weeks ago and reminding us to look on the bright side, and so, there are some positive pieces here, and, and one of which is that with this release of the compendium option, which we didn't know about when this first, you know, came to light about a waiver and, and the Right to Read Act, it does open up choices that we didn't previously think we would have if a waiver was denied. was denied. And so your question, Nicole, about a fully scripted program, what this potentially allows us to do by selecting, you know, the compendium option, is to keep some of those programs that we've had in place here in district. And if we, you know, think back to some of those pieces that were important to us in the mission statement, we chose those programs like G.O.D.s and Hegarty and Foundations with that same, you know, North Star in mind of student choice and diverse content, and really making sure that we were meeting the needs of our students with authentic text. So, we're happy about that piece, no, we're not thrilled about having to make a change with the resources we use, but I'll go back to what we've said all along, there are districts that use programs as curriculum, and then there's districts that have curriculum and use programs, and we're the latter. So even if we have to make some changes to the programs that we use, our curriculum will still be our curriculum, we'll still be tying the standards together, we'll still be looking for student voice and choice, you know, in our classrooms every day, and so while we wouldn't be thrilled about that, we'll do what we need to do from the curriculum writing standpoint to still make sure that our vision statement comes through in the new resources. So it is a good piece of that versus option two, and we put that down there on purpose, that would be selecting from the seven or eight complete programs, which would mean getting rid of G.O.D.s, Hegarty, Foundations, programs that are, you know, we believe in and our students have used here in district with success, and having to move into a complete program. We don't like that option at the moment, we'd prefer, you know, this if that compendium choice ends up being the direction that we move in.
Wisdom, okay, go ahead, I see that.
Yes, so the two, the two programs that would support comprehension and vocabulary are Witten Wisdom.
That was a beautiful commentary, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, that's okay. I read you. And then Bookworms is the other piece that would, if we were to put one of those, according to the state's guidance at the moment, in place with what we have currently, that would move us into full compliance with the right--
We can. Here--
Right, so the workshop model is our delivery method for instruction. This would mean that they would be asking us to remove any support pieces from the Teachers' College units of study and replace them with--
Because it's about the program and the materials.
Yes, yeah, it's complicated, it is.
But I think it's an important point because, you know, Jess and I had this conversation, we're thinking analogies that I'll give up for now, maybe take out another time, but the end of the day, I think one of the most important things about this is, even if we do have to make a change, and where we decided to make a change, what we have going for us that many other districts do not, is, as Jess said, this isn't about our curriculum, it's not about our professional learning, it's about the programmatic materials. The amount of time and resources that we have invested in the professional development of our teachers to be able to teach this way over the past five years has made all of us better teachers of reading and writing. And so now, if we have to say, "Use this instead of that," it's not ideal because it's also our faculty having to relearn using pieces, us rewriting pieces of the curriculum to match up where it's necessary and so on, but from a, what our faculty members can do, we are in a much better place for what we've done over the past five years, even if they make us throw pieces of it in the garbage.
Break down--
Basically.
We're just kind of waiting to see what they--
Wait and see what they're, we're kind of doing, we're doing two things at the same time. Turn that in to say, "We still might want to fight you on this." And on the flip side--
Prepare for the apocalypse.
We're prepared, just try to be prepared here, right. On the one hand, we still might want to fight you on this, and you might still, a month from now, look at the new units of study and say, "Oh, never mind, Avon, those were the ones you already had, you're fine. Thanks for submitting the letter, we missed that part in the waiver," right? That might be, that could totally do what--
Or any other variation of--
Some, or any other variation. That, or, actually, now we looked closer at your waiver and everything is denied. I don't think that happened.
Couldn't happen in one universe.
Jody just passed out, just fell right off the seat back there. Or, in the flip side of that, we'll continue the work with our, with our committee that we've put together, which, you know, is not all of the exact same people that it was when this work started, because some of them aren't even with us anymore, but to remember, I think it's what's important for the board and the public to remember is, we have, we have very qualified people here working on this. These are, these are certified educators, they're certified reading consultants. As a reminder, Jess is a certified reading consultant, we forget, we don't talk about that very often, but Jody is an elementary instructor who is also a reading consultant. We have very qualified people in reading here, and they are the ones who have done all of this to begin with and are now still looking at it. So, I think with that in mind, that's where I'm not concerned about how we move forward.
That is my point.
I know that's your point. I know that's your point.
Well, so long, and I thank them all. I just, someone at the state who doesn't know Avon, doesn't know the needs of our students, just dictated this. Anyway, move on. Thank you, I'll be quiet for now.
Anything else that we didn't say that we wanted to say?
No, I think we--
You're the star of tonight.
I think we just about covered, I'm almost afraid to share this next slide, but--
But there's a slide that says, "Save them for next time." She took out the slide that said, "Save them for next time." I'm kidding.
No, in all seriousness, I know this is complex and sometimes hard to follow, even for us, but just are there any questions from anyone that we could hope to clarify?
Well, it's derailing, and it's taken a tremendous amount of time and bandwidth to, instead of, you know, let's just call it like it is, it's taking us away from the work we're trying to continue to move forward because we're stopping and sidestepping and justifying and revising and thinking and putting together presentations to talk again about things that we've done for five years. So, yes, and it is what it is. It's not great. That's it for that? That's it for that, thanks. I'm not sure I have any other updates after that. One thing I wanted to say, it's too bad, I'm not able to show you the pictures, I know that you, the board saw them because I sent them to all of you, but back to Deb mentioning, and I've got, I've got to, I've got to draft, I have one of them with me. If anybody else, even one of you out there happens to have the other one, that would be, that would be fantastic. Oh, you have the other one? So, as Deb said, we visited on Friday, and it was kind of like the prize patrol at Roaringbrook and Pine Grove. We had set it up in advance, the children and their, and their families were not able to be here tonight. This is a tough board meeting, this last Tuesday before the holiday break is, thanks everyone. I didn't tell you it would be a short meeting tonight, so, good thing. But I had wanted to do something to showcase what the students do. You know, we keep looking for ways, and we talked about this as a board too, what are the ways that we can continue to showcase our students and our faculty? We've done that here through the recognitions, and been looking for some other ways to just make sure the community sees it too. And what, what better representation than something that everyone can see? And so, I sent a communication out to the principals and assistant principals at Pine Grove and Roaringbrook, and asked them to share it with all the kindergarten teachers and the art teachers. Admittedly, it was a little bit last minute, we pulled this together, you know, we had a few other distractions going on, and then I remembered I wanted to try to get this done, so again, I'm very thankful to you for ingratiating and pulling this together, I know it wasn't easy, and to the teachers also. I asked that the kindergarten students draw a picture on a, on a regular size piece of paper, you know, eight and a half by 11. Didn't have to be anything special, could be a piece of regular copy paper, and we, and it was to be a winter theme that we could turn into a holiday card for Avon Public Schools. And because we have two elementary schools, I decided I had to pick two, so some, if you're Jean Macey at AMS, you got the luck of the draw, whether it was the Roaringbrook version or the Pine Grove version, and sent to you in your mailbox, because we sent them to everyone who was here. Thanks to Christine, who did so much of the select work, putting these, the designs to paper, Vistaprint and so on, stuffing envelopes, you name it, this wasn't an easy task, pulled it all together for me at the end. Everybody at Pine Grove, we tried to give the Pine Grove version, everyone at Roaringbrook tried to give the Roaringbrook version. So, all of the hundreds of pictures came on eight and a half and 11 to my office, and all of the kindergarteners knew that Dr. C. had asked for them to draw this as a contest, and everybody should do their best, because I wanted to see all of them, we all wanted to see all of them, but I could only choose one from each kindergarten, from each class, I should say, each school, for Pete's sake. And they all came, and they were all very cute. And they ran the gamut of what they, what they drew, as you might imagine, they're five, six years old. Now, some might still be four, actually, right now. Based on the current legislation, some might even be four. And you can imagine what, you know, the gamut ran of them. So, this one is from Pine Grove School, and I know you're not really going to be able to get it on camera, but this was the picture from the Pine Grove student, and inside it just says, "This 2023 district holiday card was created by a kindergarten student from Pine Grove School," and obviously, this one says the same, but Roaringbrook School, and then it just says, "Wishing you a healthy and prosperous new year, Avon Public Schools" and Superintendent. So, this gem, and of course, I had to put our mission on the back of it, this gem was a mixed media piece, that was blue construction paper in the back, and where you see the, the trees and the birch trees, those were, they had cut them out and pasted them on, and then drew the branches. And the little owl, which was what made it for us, was done in chalk. So, lovely, lovely little one who did this from Pine Grove, and we came and celebrated with her and her parents and her class, that was Kylie, yes, and Christine, again, humored me, and I asked us to figure out how to frame one into, not exactly a plaque, more like something you could hang on a wall as a parent. So, this is in a frame for Kylie and her parents, and we put, I didn't want to put the children's name inside of the cards, even though they, they were okay with it being shared publicly at the board meeting and so on, but Christine put the names of them, so it says, "They designed this card for Avon Public Schools," and we gave, we presented the parents with that. They were, they were thrilled. It was like they had Elvis in their classroom in kindergarten, and if they even knew who that was. And at Roaringbrook, we had this one. Also, a little bit of mixed media, you can't tell from a distance, but the scarves were little pieces of like glitter tape that they put on, that were very glittery when they made the originals, and that was Little Sukie, who as we found out, the apple didn't fall too far from the tree, because her mom is someone who helps do the door decorating there. And we had a really fun time with her and her parents also. So it was just a nice tradition that we started, the students were excited about it, I think the faculty and staff seeing them are happy to get them, sent them out to police department, town officials, board members, and the parents got some to keep for their own children. So, I want to just thank you again for helping me to make that happen. I think it was a great thing for our teachers, our art departments, because our art teachers helped, and the students. So we had, we had a fun day. I'm sorry they couldn't be here tonight, you would have liked to see them. Is that yours? There aren't a lot of these left to go around, these might be worth something someday. Also, I'm going to do, I'm going to go out on a limb and do this, just in case, and he's hiding back there, I'm going to do it tonight, just because we're coming up on the end of it. I know, Mike, you already know what I'm about to do. I just want to thank Mr. Michael Rankowitz for coming back and working with us at Roaringbrook as the interim assistant principal along Susan Horvath, he'll be with us through just all of January, we hope, you know, given the way that things look right now, he's not able to stay after that because of TRB requirements for his retirement, but he has been a rock star of an administrator, always, but certainly in the last few months, coming back and helping out at Roaringbrook, and I think, I think he might actually miss us, probably more leaving this time than last time. They're little, they're littler ones, and they're, you know, they, they bring in presents, right? Thank you so much, Mike, we are very appreciative, thank you very much.
I've never had to explain TRBs so much, because people are coming to me and begging that we keep you, and I'm like, "We would, I promise we would."
This is another example of a legislative change related to, don't even get me started. But, but here we are. So we are working to Plan G, I think, at Roaringbrook for what's next. Mr. Duffy remains out on medical leave, just a quick update for you, he is doing well. Yesterday was his birthday, he, he's okay with people knowing this, he is, he is up in Boston undergoing treatment, he has to stay there for a time right now to be kept germ-free and so on after what he's had going on, so, but I, I had the opportunity to see him and meet with him, he stopped by and saw me, Roberto, Jess, Susan, those of us at Central Office, and looks great, typical bill, very, very positive, and so we're wishing him the best still, and we'll keep our fingers crossed and wait to hear what's next. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to consent calendar. Is there any reason why someone would remove an item from the consent calendar? If not, I will move to approve it as it has written, do I have a second? Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will just comment that we are very grateful to the Thompson Brook PTO for their donation of $4,400. So that was wonderful. Old business, this is a component that was on our last agenda, as well as discussed already at the Curriculum Professional Practices. Basically, the 30-day review period for this particular primary instructional material book, Patron Saint of Nothing, has passed, and so now we're at the point of approving it. So Jackie, I don't know if you want to make the motion.
Motion to approve the primary instructional material, Patron Saint of Nothing.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously again, thank you. New business, policy 5145.4, nondiscrimination as regard to student. Dr. Colonel Mola, if you want to give any highlights.
I think the last time we brought this policy to the board, I told you we'd be back with it not very long, because there were changes made to federal, state statute, and also guidelines that were released by the Office of Civil Rights and the State Department of Education. These policies represent changes that were necessary as a result of those legislative changes and directives. We had a robust discussion about all of these policies at the policy committee meeting, and the majority of the board was actually present for that, thank you, because we were able to have a rich discussion to be able to move these forward tonight, so obviously, if there's, there's questions, we'll, we'll answer the follow-up questions tonight, but just a recap of the discussion we had for the changes, I think would probably be in order for each of these, I'll do that, I'm just saying, we'll go change by change, I'll give a recap because we did so much of that at the committee meeting. Each time nondiscrimination policies are revised, they're separated by students and personnel, so you have to do them separately, because there are differences in the law and in the procedures based on whether or not we are talking about a student or an employee. In the one we are looking at right now, for students, nondiscrimination, it was, there had to be two definitions that were added, sexual orientation and domestic violence. Those definitions, as prescribed by law and the guidelines, needed to be updated in the policies, and those are the recommended changes.
Thank you. Jeff has a question?
My standard question that I'm going to ask that you can answer for all of them in one shot?
I'll answer it right now.
Is it the model policy given to us from Shipman, or there have been other changes from Avon?
In, in the nondiscrimination student and also the nondiscrimination personnel, remember, they are exactly the Avon models, with the exception of the section that utilizes the term transgender, that the board discussed putting in to make sure--
Previously.
--the definition was clear, yes. And legal counsel was that, that was an acceptable change, that was discussed with your board attorney.
Yep.
So it's not exactly the model, but it is--
But all the additions this time around--
Correct.
--are from the model--
That's right.
--added to the previous Avonization we voted on a couple of months ago?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Everything else is a change that is model policy, that is directly a reflection of the law or State Department guidelines.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Laura, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. Motion to approve revised policy 5145.4, nondiscrimination for students, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn, all in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Our next one is policy 4118.11, nondiscrimination regarding personnel, which you've already pretty much spoken to, correct?
Yes, the only other one, so yes, sexual orientation and domestic violence definitions needed to be updated, but also the legislation that was passed in the, in this current legislative year, required language on erased criminal history, I think we discussed this a little bit once already. Basically, if a prospective employer-- Basically, if a prospective employee has a criminal history, but it has been officially erased, we cannot ask them about it. And legisla, that's new law, and it's reflected now in this policy.
Any other questions? All right, Laura, would you like to make the motion?
So we have two, we have the motion to the nondiscrimination for personnel. Did you want to do that one first?
That's the one we're on right now.
Yeah, okay. Motion to approve revised policy 4118.11, nondiscrimination for personnel.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Thage, all in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Next is Policy 4118.235, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children or reports of sexual assault of students by school employees.
Again, this is completely the model policy. There was a change made to the legislation that I wish I was not the one that had to say out loud at this meeting. It was easier when the attorney came and said this one. But the change to this policy is that the legislature made a change to the definition of sexual contact that includes with a deceased person. And because that is in the legislation as part of the definition of sexual contact, and we as mandated reporters have to report anything that has to do with sexual contact with a minor, if for a terrible reason someone said something like that, this just has to be clear, we would also have to report that.
All right, any other questions?
That is good to know.
Okay. All right, Laura?
I'll put a memo out about that one right away. Right away, we'll put that memo out. I think that someone would have reported it no matter what, but now it is in the legislation and the policies, so.
Now it's a law, that's good.
It is the law.
All right. Motion to approve revised policy 4118.235, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children or reports of sexual assault of students by school employees.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Thage, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Policy 6148, improve the completion of the FAFSA.
So you remember, we had a policy that was a new policy for all school districts that had to be put into place for the current year. We discussed it, we passed it because of legislative change that all school districts were being required to do things that would increase the rate of completion of the federal application for financial aid. FAFSA. And so the legislature took it one step further this summer. And as I already said at the policy committee meeting, I don't agree with this from a, for one very specific reason, which is it has to do with students graduating from school. The policy is a reflection of the law, starting with the class of 2025, so this year's juniors and on. The law requires that they, that the FAFSA is filled out. Now, to be clear, that's a, that's a parent or guardian form to fill out for financial aid, unless you're an emancipated youth or you are doing it on behalf of your parents because maybe they are unable or unwilling to do it, which are more students than we might like to think that they are. You are now required to fill it out or not graduate. And I think that's ridiculous because we shouldn't put something on a student as a graduation requirement that has to do with whether or not their parent or legal guardian fills out a financial aid form. But that said, luckily, there's also a provision for a waiver that can be submitted by either the family or the school district if we are unable to get the families to complete the form. So, in other words, we have to implement this policy in that way, in a way that would actually not preclude any student from graduating because their family did not fill out this form. And yes, I can tell you that we will do that. Because I knew that would be the next question.
And if they're not going to college?
Doesn't matter.
And it would be nice if FAFSA could make it easier to fill out.
Right. Many people, in all honesty, don't fill out the form because they know they're not going to get the aid because of the income guidelines.
So who accepts and judges the way?
We just turn it into the state. This is another one of those things, yeah.
Another paper. Do we accept it organically?
No, they do. But what I will say is, this is another, I'm sorry, this is the way this meeting tonight, but this is another example of something that we're being told to do that's going to take up time from people that work here unnecessarily. I do understand, and I think we all understand and would promote, that the spirit, I think, of this law is that trying to make sure that students and families know that there are, there is financial aid out there for people that qualify. And I think a lot of times, people don't fill out the forms. And in particular, in districts with a higher concentration of families with severe need, they're trying, I think the spirit of the law is to put more of an onus on the school districts to make sure that students can get the aid they may qualify for. And this is a way to push that through. We have plenty of students here that qualify for and need aid. I'm just arguing that I don't think it ought to be a graduation requirement to fill the form out. But, but it is now, and I can't change that.
Any other questions? All right, Laura?
Motion to approve revised policy 6148 to improve the completion of the FAFSA form.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. And our last policy is 9325.2, construction of agenda.
This is a very easy one because it's, it's an update required because of an update in the Freedom of Information Act guidelines. And it's, it's basically that if this, this entire, you know, packet that we're all looking at, that has all of these policies and so on that we're using tonight, has to be available to the public. It always has been here, that's, nothing is changing, but the law got updated related to FOI to say the same, and so the policy needs to be updated to reflect it.
It has to be before the meeting, has to be on?
It doesn't necessarily have to be before the meeting, no. No.
All right, any other questions?
Sometimes, as you know, we make changes to these until the last minute, which is why we also have extras printed with us in case there's people that wanted to see them here. And then we put the final one up.
Go ahead, Laura.
Motion to approve revised policy 9325.2, construction of an agenda.
All right, second by Jeff, all in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, our last item under new business is the high school course of studies. Is this you, Jess?
Yes. Just want to, Jess will go quickly through this because I know you've, you've seen it already too. And thank you to Jess and the, and the high school for, once again, going through the course of studies, just as a reminder. Nothing is in this course of studies that hasn't already been approved. The courses that we offer, as you know, go through board approval.
Can we have that conversation?
Hang on one sec. Yep. Just finished that. I don't want to forget something.
Because that's not what you said last year.
Go ahead.
Last year, when we had this exact conversation, I identified 30 courses that weren't on the website, they're now on the website. And when I asked you point blank, "Has all the curriculum been approved?", the answer was no, some are still in draft form. So.
Because we're talking about courses, not curriculum. That's what I mean, I'm making the differentiation between the two.
Okay.
Hang on, let me back up to make sure, I want to make sure I answer the question fully. So for a course to be offered, it goes through CPDC and an approval process that includes the board. We write stage one curriculum to go with that course approval. That is, very often, had been done after the course as a whole was approved. The idea for the course, right, the narrative that goes with it, what are the basic standards we're going to teach, what are the primary instructional materials that we're going to use, go through board approval. The curriculum continues to be written, and we take the curriculum through for approval also. So we're not approving a curriculum tonight. We're approving courses that are able to run at Avon High School, some of which, back to your point, when you asked me this last year, and is it the same now? Yes, although we're up at a much higher percentage of curriculum that is written now. If we didn't, let's, let me put this answer in a different way. If it was seven years ago, and we were only going to offer courses at the high school that had board-approved curriculum for them, we wouldn't offer a lot of the curric, we wouldn't be able to offer a lot of the courses that were, that were given here because we were still in the process of writing curriculum that didn't exist for years. So all of the core courses, the curriculum got written first in Avon. Some of that started well before my time. The elective courses, the curriculum continued to get written for, but the courses themselves, the, the description of the course and the title of the course, whether it's a half year or a full year, and what requirement it meets is what's in this program of studies.
I think what still bothers me is, right, we hear all the time, teachers aren't teaching the curriculum, right? They're, they're inserting their own opinions. And the only way we can truly defend our teachers is to have that board-approved curriculum. This all started years ago when I had this revelation, I'm like, why are we voting on the program of study? And I had asked the question, this is simply just a reflection of the board curriculum, right? And that, that's what opened Pandora's box years ago. Because my opinion of this is, every course listed should have a curriculum that has been board-approved. Now, are there trial runs and so forth? Yes, and those should be approved. But I think what my frustration has been is that there are several courses that have been running without proper board-approved curricular documents. They've been running for years in this district, and some of those are the ones that we've had parents stand here and complain about what's going on, and we don't have an answer because we don't have curriculum in place. And the answer I get every year is, well, it's all in a cycle, it's all in a cycle, right? I've been here six years, and I don't think I've voted on that many curriculum documents when we know that there's been a missing lack of. I understand fully, it takes time. Last year, I asked you point blank, are there papers that I can look at for these missing courses? And you told me, no, there was not.
I don't remember that.
Okay. I'll be more than happy from the January meeting, show you that. Because I said, if I walk in and ask the civil rights course, if I walked into your office that next day, will I have documents? And you said, no, not for that one.
Right.
And there were others. There were, there were courses been running for years that we didn't have documents for. My concern is, when are we going to get them? There were 30 or so courses, when I went through the program of study last year, when I went through the website, they were missing. They're there now, thank you. I do appreciate the hard work, I want to acknowledge that hard work. But my question is, when do those 30 courses come here? I don't, Mike, I think there's a perception that all of this has board-approved curriculum, and that's not what this is. This could be board-approved courses. But the prob, I get that, but the problem is, does the public understand that what is being taught in the classrooms aren't fully board-approved? Do the board members fully understand what's being taught in some of these courses has not been fully board-approved yet?
Well, I guess I'll start, start by saying that every year we have this conversation, it feels like we have to have an argument about this. And I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you about how, what has or hasn't happened. I want to be clear about that. I'm not doing this to be argumentative. I am the person, unfortunately, and I think I said this last year too, that brought the course of studies to the board for attention and approval. It was never done before I was here. So unfortunately, I've created this continuing problem for myself and ourselves by continuing to have the conversation because it is best practice that a board approves a program of studies because it's for perpetuity, it allows a record of what was offered at a school. That's not tied to, let's say, a, a schedule, right? We go from one, we go from, you know, power teacher pro to power school, for example, and something is, you know, you're not going to print out the courses that were offered 10 years ago. Once a course of studies, or a program of studies, depending on what you call it, gets approved by a board, though, it's a, it's a record for perpetuity for students who were at the school at that time. So let's say Lillian, on her way to, goes to school. And remind me where you're going to school, Lillian, because in the midst of this, it's gone from my mind.
I haven't committed.
Yes. You haven't committed yet, but.
So don't put her on the spot.
But we've talked about, we've talked about a couple of them. We've talked about a couple of them. So let's say you're at LSU, right?
Oh.
Let's say that. And in two years from now, you decide you're going to transfer out and you're going to go to a different university. When you transfer credits from one university to another, they look at the program of studies from that university to determine whether or not they will accept credit for credit because does that course description, not looking at a curriculum, does that course description and the amount of credits and seat time and so on, and the requirements that it met, the standards that it met for the, for the state college system or private one, depending on where you are, does it match to theirs? This does the same thing for our high school students. That's really, that's really what this is about. Bringing the course of studies to the board for approval, I started doing with Mr. Rankowitz, I think, was the first year we did it. And Mike, you've probably seen back there, remember having the same conversation. Because sometimes, it's, it's, it's like an insurance policy for our students. I've seen it, I've actually seen it happen. I've seen it happen more as a high school principal than I have as a superintendent. And in part, it's because I've made sure this happened as a superintendent. I have seen it happen where, for example, a student who's on a scholarship for athletics gets to school and something that along the way was missed. Maybe they didn't take that algebra class that they were supposed to take, or it looks that way on their transcript. And now their scholarship might be at stake, they're looking back at what course is, and they're trying to match up. I'd been asked for the program of studies as a high school principal and had to produce it for a graduate, and what was in there made the difference between whether or not they were going to determine that that student had met the requirements to, one, be at the school, or two, maintain their scholarship. When there's a board-approved program of studies, you're always going to put your hand on it and be able to say, no, that course was offered. You know what? Mistakes get made. You could graduate, and there could be something left off of your transcript. And you're going to come back later to us and say, I took Algebra II. I took it in X year. It's going to be in our course of studies, we're going to cross-reference that, hopefully we're going to pull a schedule out. That's the documentation we're going to send to your college or university. That's the purpose of having this. It's a running record of the courses that were offered. That said, to your more, your actual concern, which is, it's like a yeah, but.
Uh huh.
What you're, if I may, what you, I think, again, are actually saying to me is, you don't think that we should run courses that don't have approved curriculum.
Unless they are approved for a trial run where we have a sense of when that curriculum will come here. I think my ultimate question is very simple. When will we see these documents? You labeled them last year's draft, and when they went up on the website originally, they were listed as draft. I don't think they're listed as draft anymore because you started putting on the date that was passed by the board. And when I look today, I don't think that's there anymore. I just want to know that every course that is being run, either A, has the curriculum approved by us, or has been given the authority to run as a trial for a period of time, but ultimately, the curricular should come before the board for approval. That's all. I view this, I understand the purpose of this, but I view this as a reflection of what is supposed to be taught in our schools, and that, to me, is the curriculum.
Can I just interject that, I'm wondering if that discussion, which I do think is important because I think it's valuable to public, has a really robust meaningful understanding of what we are kind of putting out there, might be better taken up in the subcommittee so that you can really get into the degree, so that all board members can really understand which classes you're talking about, what you think is missing or what is missing. Because to do it right now, I don't know, are you going to not vote? Are you going to vote against?
I have some, I'm, I'm asking the question every year, when will this curriculum come to the board?
So I'm saying, what if we kind of, like, say, we're going to look at this with intentions?
I think the response going to be from administration is going to be, there's a time crunch. They're probably going to start going to scheduling in February, and they need the program of study. So to answer your question, is am I going to vote no? No, because I think that would truly hold up the operation of the district. The courses are running, I'm going to trust the superintendent and the administration and the staff that they're doing everything in their best intentions. I'm not implying that anyone is doing anything in bad intentions. But we often find ourselves in discussion with members of the public regarding what is being taught. And I can't defend anything because oftentimes, even amongst us, we've had these conversations, well, this is board-approved, the board is supportive. We never voted on this.
So I'm just saying, maybe enough reasons would be to respect that part of the conversation, would be to say that we're going to put it on like the next agenda for the curriculum subsequently, so that we can get this part done, and that we can have a fuller understanding so that we can get this part done, and that we can have a fuller understanding of what's missing and what's present for the curriculum in particular.
Let me, let me do the best I can to, now I've broken it back down to what I think the actual question is. And when I said I didn't remember what you were saying, saying that, and then you used the example, yes, because what you were asking me, just to revisit that, is, we don't house every, every piece of material that someone hands out in a classroom, we don't house it at Central Office, right? So, you asked me, "Could I come and see those?", the answer is, the answer is no. I mean, you couldn't see all of it, is what I'm saying.
No, but I should be able to see the standards, the objectives, and so forth. And last year, there wasn't at least 30 on the website. And when I asked specifically, all of them were not written as of.
Let's talk about the, because that's part of the question that is easier for us to answer, and I think actually answers what you're saying. Because, as a recap for everyone, and for those of you with us tonight and maybe watching this later, Avon came from a place of having almost no written curriculum. It wasn't that long ago. So, we still had to teach students. The courses were running in, for, as you've said too, many, many years without a written go-to curriculum. And to be clear before, that, to be honest with you, it's not that unusual. I'm not saying it's great, or it's best practice, but it's not that unusual. You can go to any school district in the state and find out that they've been teaching, you know, this course on basket weaving without a written curriculum for 50 years. That said, obviously, we didn't want it that way here. We wanted to make sure that we had a written, visible, transparent curriculum. Even besides whether or not it was on the website, we wanted it somewhere. So, many years ago, prior to my time, prior to Justice Time as being the Assistant Superintendent, this initiative was launched to write curriculum for every course. They started with the essentials, the core classes, particularly at, you know, at the high school back. Core math classes, core English classes, core social studies, science. If you think about how many classes that means over a pre-K to 12 school district, it's a lot. So, that started, and it went on every year with the district grinding out the curriculum. Sometimes to match what was already being done, sometimes totally being revised. At the same time, as you know, we often have to bring back, we might, let's not get into the ELA discussion again right now, but we might spend six years writing a curriculum and then have to bring it back and revise it on day, on year six, day one, right? So, sometimes, we've paused where we were in a writing of something because we've had to go back and address something else that was a core curriculum. That said, I'm really proud of the work that the Curriculum Department and the Faculty has done alongside of them, Teaching and Learning Department, I should say, in writing these curriculum. Because we are up to how many that are now not only written, but they are published on the website.
Yes.
Where are we at that, at this point?
I don't have the exact percentage. It's over 90.
Sorry. We weren't thinking about this tonight.
No, no. You said that, you said that in September, and I praised you for the hard work.
There's, there's a few that we know are in the process of being written this year.
Like the digital art.
Digital arts on here this evening, right? And there's some, like, American Sign Language, some coursework that needs to be done with them. Wellness is in the process of writing their curriculum, so there's some work there that would come to you.
But there was a whole, to come to, so there was a whole bunch that were added between, when I brought this up last January and September, when you shared, or August when you shared it was up to 90. When do those come to us?
I'd have to look and see what, because I know we brought Performing Arts, we brought 712 Social Studies. Those, that was a significant number of courses, so I'd have to audit those between which courses were missing previously, at least in my time.
That's all mine. And I get the hard work. My point overall is, I would like to see every course that we offered, every course that is offered here that has at least been run through the Board at some point, whether I'm on it or not.
And we don't, to be clear, we agree.
That's a shared goal.
Yes, we, we, we're at the same.
And I just, I just, I get frustrated because I felt, to your point, there's been a tremendous amount of work. But I just want to keep hounding, my expectation is that all that will come here, I do like to go back through the practice to make sure that all that curriculum is stamped with the date on there, because then that shuts me up easily. Here, Jeff, you're complaining about this course. Here's the date that's on it. Or, hey, you know what? Some point, I may not be here, and someone else is going to step in, ask, "When did we approve this?" Oh, this was on this date, and that settles that problem.
I understand.
That, that's my point. I don't have a problem with this. It's what this, in my mind, what this represents.
And so, that's, and if, we have this as a Board, not me necessarily, Jeff, every year. This represents the broad stroke of the courses that are able to be offered and/or taught at the, so there are many courses in here that we haven't actually used in years, but maybe next year is the year they're going to run. So, to be clear, I think this might help. And yes, we should have a conversation about it again in subcommittee, but I think this one sentence clears this up. Correct me if I'm wrong. I am telling you, these courses are approved in general. I'm not telling you the curriculum for them is. This is a Course of Studies, not, not a curricular document.
Right.
And so...
I just want to make sure there's Board-approved curriculum for each of the courses.
And I agree with you.
Okay.
I think it's related to this, but separate from this in the sense that we are, there are courses that regardless if anybody ever wrote the curriculum for and we're on it now, they had to be taught. So, if we weren't teaching, there's no curriculum for some of the wellness courses, for example. That had to get added in as a result of changes to the state legislation also, and the graduation requirements. If we said, "We're not going to offer them because we never taught this before. We don't have any curriculum written", then they wouldn't be graduating because they wouldn't meet the state-required courses. You see what I'm saying? Every time they put something out, on the one hand, we don't want them to mandate curriculum and hand it over to us and say, "Use this", right? But on the other hand, when they put out the requirement that you are going to take four English classes, and you are going to take a civics class, and you are going to take two wellness classes or equivalent one-credit, whatever it is that they change in requirements, we're not always predicting. And when they change it, we have to put it into effect, and then oftentimes, we're back doing curriculum to match what we've already been told we have to do. And so, the digital art is a good example for why that's not written yet. It hasn't, go ahead.
Well, just so, what you'll see in the notes is, this course was approved in 2021 to be written, and actually hasn't been taught yet. The teacher at the high school came forward, says there's an interest, quite a bit of interest from his students who are in digital art. It's not actually called Digital Art I, it's just called Digital Art. And is saying, "I did have this course approved. The curriculum, you know, needs to be approved. And so, we're making a plan with him to, you know, finish that curriculum writing this year, bring it to you for approval, but we'd like to have it in the Course of Studies so that those students can sign up in January to take that course next year." So, that's an example. But we are still cleaning, you know, you're right. I mean, there's some work to do here to clean this up. I mean, there's also, you'll see in here, there's a notation on a course that was proposed at one point, never actually approved, never written. We're pulling it out for that exact reason, that we want to follow the process, which is propose the course, bring you the curriculum, teach the course. You know, Dr. Carnemull is right. We've got still some cleanup to do from courses that have been here historically. We don't want to take those away. We've got to go back. But, you know, we're certainly happy to audit that and take a look because I'm guessing there's probably a mismatch there of some courses that still do need approval, some courses that haven't been fully written, and some that probably were approved along the way, and we need to get dates and things on those as well, too. So...
That's the core of my concern. I'm afraid if I don't ask about it, if I don't bring it up every year, then we just move forward, and then the stuff slips through the cracks. I get how large the curriculum is. I get how much work, and I appreciate all that work. I hate writing curriculum. I'm being pulled right when we get back to write some. So, but I, it just for format, because we've had arguments among Board members over the years about what is required and not required, and in terms of discussions about teachers and so forth. You know, I'll support anything the Board has approved. But when we get into conversations with people, I get criticized sometimes by Board members. If I say, "Well, it's not, the teacher's doing something that's not Board-approved", right? Because then it looks like I'm throwing the teacher on the bus. When is a statement a fact? That, that's my point. I just want to raise it annually to keep it on the radar. I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with the Curriculum Committee, but I think my concerns are hurt. I just would like to make sure that we get to a point where, when we make changes to a course, we write the curriculum, and it goes before the Board, and then that stops the conversation about what is being taught. So, I do have a minor question with this, but I can save that until you're done with your presentation, because I jumped in.
Well, I think, yes, the presentation probably is non-existent at this point. Let's answer the question, because we've talked about a lot of it already. Go ahead, Laura.
My questions were much simpler. One of them is, do we still offer for credit recovery courses online?
Yes.
Okay? Because I did not see that anywhere, but maybe I missed it?
Virtual High School.
It's in there as virtual high school.
I looked on page, I looked under Virtual High School, page 64, and I didn't see it there.
But we do, yes, we do still offer.
For that purpose specifically. And then on page 108, it talks about a change to the academic load requirement where, basically, my question is, how will situations for which a student is simply unable to carry a course requirement? I don't know. They broke a leg skiing. I'm making something up. But they, they simply cannot take on a particular course load for the next semester. How will that be handled if it looks like...
It's individual student need-based. There are times that even, even state-mandated graduation requirements, we have to look at individually for students that may not be able to make changes.
But it doesn't say, it doesn't say that here. It just blatantly crosses out the paragraph saying, basically, you're required, it's not, at least not obvious to me. If I were a parent, I would want to know, how do you manage that?
And the reason for that, Laura, is because we are reflecting the requirements for all students in this, and anytime it, we might veer away for an individual, it's based on an IEP, a doctor's note, a 504, that, that those would be the ways.
Understood, but it just, there used to be language in here that said, "Here's how..."
We can look at that, that would, we can look at putting something back that, like that back in.
Just so that parents know how to go about when stuff happens.
And I was just going to say, and if we did that, we wouldn't bring it back to you again and say, "In a month from now, redo this." We only, once a year, we clean this thing up for reasons like Jeff said. We look through, right, and say, "Why is that course still here? It actually never, you know, never got done." It's really a way of keeping us on track, too, as a, as a district.
It's more the how-to.
So, if we make a few of those sorts of changes, we'll just update it and publish it that way.
And why the change from Tungusis Community College to the Connecticut State Community College?
That was a name change from them.
Because it's not consistent. Some places, it still refers to Tungusis. That's why I asked. In some places, it's Tungusis, and in some places, places, it's Connecticut State Community College.
You probably missed one along the way that's listed numerous times.
That's all? Just one, I understand.
So, thank you for that.
The variation.
We'll fix it, find it in other places.
Other questions? Well, then, I've got to come to you.
I just, I wanted to really say how much I appreciate when you do the summary of changes for us, because it just makes it that much easier for us to know exactly where those moments have occurred, and clearly, you've put a lot of effort into this. And I loved seeing the Bristol Tech options for our students who perhaps want to go down a career path versus going onto a college path. So, I'm glad that that's a conversation we've been having on this Board, and it's actually coming to fruition. So, thank you for that. Jeff?
So, first follow-up comment on that, I do agree, and I appreciate the Bristol Tech. I actually bumped into an Avon student who's working at Subway. We got into a conversation. He said he has no interest going to college. He wants to go into the careers, professions, and so I'm glad to see that option. Could you just quickly speak about the Mastery Program? Because we've offered that long before the state required. The state no longer requires it, but we're still continuing with the Mastery credit requirement. Yes?
Well, they do require it, not...
My understanding was the state has changed that law last, last spring, and then it depended upon Boards of Ed's changing the policy.
It's, we went back through that policy recently, and it, what it's really talking about is whether or not it has to be a capstone, what, we have options for what it can look like for you to...
Because we have a capstone is one thing. So, we require the half-credit for capstone, and then we also require a half-credit for Mastery. I have no problem if we're still continue requiring the Mastery, but that half-credit is no longer required by the state, right?
Well, you can have your, so there's the state requirement, then there's our Avon requirements, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, yes, we as Avon, we're keeping the Mastery even though the state no longer requires it.
Presently, yes.
Correct. And that's, that includes the internship and so forth, which is a great program. I'm not complaining. I just know that the state made a big deal a couple of years ago about requiring school districts to create it. I know we were used as a model. I may have presented the Avon model to another district to show a good example of one. I just want to be clear, because I saw that, and I know the state has changed. I know many districts have removed that half-credit requirement. I just want to make sure that our plan at this moment is to continue forward that half-credit requirement as an Avon requirement, and the program is listed in the Program Study.
Yes. Our, what's in our Program of Studies is consistent with the policy that...
No complaints.[1735.72]